At 7 o'clock, we've called the council meeting of April 23rd to order. Would you please call the roll man?
Miller?
Yes.
Williams? Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of April 9 regular session.
I move that we approve April 9 minutes regular session.
Okay.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Next item under new business, ordinances, Bill number 2018-27, an ordinance for the purpose of providing for the annexation of territory of existing corporate boundaries to the city of Mexico. Two readings by title only and passage, Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, Senator, we have received a request for voluntary annexation of property. We held the public hearing in February. We have waited the required length of time for comments and we have received none. To cover the details of the annexation, I'll turn to Rita Jackson.
The city of Mexico received a petition from La Jolla LLC of Pemara, Missouri requesting annexation of their property located at 2977 South Clark, also known as Kelly Property, into the city limits. This property is located on the west side of South Clark between Hamilton Parkway to the north and Kelly Parkway to the south. All surrounding land is in the city limits. La Jolla LLC's plan is to utilize the site as a commercial office space for Home Bank. Section 111D of the Code of the City of Mexico states, however, no general city plan nor zoning ordinance nor any modification, amendment, or revision thereof shall be considered by the city council unless it has first been submitted to the city planning and zoning commission for its examination and recommendation. On January 19, 2018, notices were sent to 16 surrounding property owners and their tenants within 185 feet of the requested annexation. City staff received no telephone calls nor written correspondence regarding the annexation. The planning and zoning commission at their February 6, 2018, meeting made motion to make recommendation to grant approval of the requested annexation to city council. City council held its public hearing on February 12, 2018, to obtain input from any interested person, corporation, or political subdivision regarding the proposed annexation. After a 14-day waiting period, no objections were filed and the city is presented with an ordinance tonight. This annexation request is reasonable and necessary for the proper development of the city. The city has the ability to furnish all of the normal municipal services to the annexed area. Staff recommends that city council proceed with two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance. This ordinance has been posted the required length of time. And in the audience tonight, we do have here tonight Will Conrad, which is with Home Bank.
Were they already on City Water and Sewer?
Yes.
They're currently not, no.
Oh, once they come in.
Not on City Sewer, but when they're annexed, that will be posted.
So what, they have a sub-attack or?
I'm assuming when it was on individual residents, they probably did have a sub-attack back.
It was always strange that the rural fire department fought a fire right in the middle of town, basically, so, not in the middle.
I thought you meant after they annexed, what would they be on? And we will have an ordinance for zoning at the next council meeting to zone the property.
It sure looks different, sure looks different out there.
No.
Looks better.
Looks very good.
So you're with Home Bank?
I am, sir.
Goodness. I'm gonna put my bag in and put you. Your most pleasure.
Hey, I move for a first reading of Bill number 2018-27, an ordinance for the purpose of providing for the annexation of territory to the existing corporate boundaries of the city of Mexico, Missouri.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill number 2018-27, an ordinance for the purpose of providing for the annexation of territory to the existing corporate boundaries of the city of Mexico, Missouri. I move for a second reading of Bill number 2018-27.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill number 2018-27, an ordinance for the purpose of providing for the annexation of territory to the existing corporate boundaries of the city of Mexico, Missouri. I move for passage of Bill number 2018-27.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Next item is Bill number 2018-28, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Bartlett &amp; West Incorporated for the construction and engineering services for Holt Street reconstruction. Two readings by title only and passage, Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, Senator, this ordinance would authorize the contract documents with Bartlett &amp; West for the construction engineering services at Holt Street. As you know, we have received a federal grant to do this project, therefore, there are a number of additional steps that we have to take in this process, and this is one of them. Bartlett &amp; West was selected for the construction engineering services after a request for qualifications was advertised through the Missouri Department of Transportation. A response for the RFQ was received by 10 firms, and of those responses were ranked according to the criteria. Of those 10 responses, three were considered very responsive. Staff did select Bartlett &amp; West due to their familiarity of the project construction methods and the inclusion of support for the project after the Federal Highway Administration's reporting periods. The contract is submitted to the Missouri Department of Transportation's required form. Funding for the project is under the grant, which is an 80-20 grant. The city's cost share is in the amount not to exceed $14,695.09, and this is in our current budget. Staff recommends council proceed with two readings by title only and passage of the ordinance authorizing the execution of the contract agreements with Bartlett &amp; West for the services for the construction of the Holt Street. The ordinance has been posted the required length of time.
Your most pleasure. Next, I want to read Bill number 2018-28, by title only.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill number 2018-28, ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Bartlett &amp; West Incorporated for the construction and engineering services for Holt Street reconstruction. I move for a second reading of Bill number 2018-28.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill number 2018-28, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Bartlett &amp; West Incorporated for construction and engineering services for Holt Street reconstruction. I move for a passage of Bill number 2018-28.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Next item under new business, a bill 2018-29, a resolution authorizing the city manager entering into an agreement with Audrain County Historical Society to assist in providing services to the citizens. Reading by title only and passage, Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, Senator, this is for their annual agreement and funding, and to cover the agreement and the amount of funding, we will turn to Roger Haynes.
Good evening, council. The 2017-18 budget does allow for the city of Mexico to contribute to the Audrain County Historical Society the sum of $4,900 for the use in providing programs and activities to citizens. The city has provided assistance to the ACHS since the year 2000. Staff recommends that the city of Mexico and Audrain County Historical Society enter into an agreement and that council proceed with reading and passage by title only and passage of the attached resolution. Council did receive a copy of the letter that Lloyd Pratt, executive director of ACHS, prepared to outline some of the activities they did this past year and, of course, a requested amount for the upcoming budget in 2019. Lori would also like the opportunity to speak to council as time allows.
Okay, thank you. Lori?
I would also like to introduce board member Deborah Corvieu here on in support of the board. But we wanted to thank the city council and the city of Mexico for always supporting us, and we're thankful for any financial assistance that we get. As you know, it's hard to be out there sometimes, so we really appreciate it. You know, in 2015, I think I told you before that we had put in new heating and cooling, so we're trying to, as much as we can, to conserve our energy and anything we can do to further that along. So we've tried to change a lot of our incandescent bulbs out into LEDs. We also have taken, I guess you've probably seen as you've driven past, that we've painted the buildings. We've had a lot of boards and things that were deteriorating. We had a lot of repairs that we need to do. So through grants, we were able to take care of all of that. Some of the things that you know we always do, we have history camp coming up for children in third through fifth grades, and that is coming up very quickly. We also have some of the same things that, you know, we do. I've seen some of you at our different events, whether it's a Christmas, a Christmas at Graceland, or maybe music, or some event we're doing like Walk Back in Time. I wanted to tell you that last year, we broke a record. We've never had as many fourth grade students attend our education day. I think I told you the year before, we broke a record with 900 kids. This year, we've had well over 1,000 children come for our education day. So it was crazy busy, but it was really exciting. Unfortunately, the people that work on that end of education day are very, very detail-oriented, and they were able to handle it very well. We've got new things that come in all the time. People want to bring us things. Wataro employees in 1986 built what would have been an old country store since they supplied goods for grocery stores. They built an old country store, an old general store, and brought it in. They, I guess, had it out at Wataro for many years, so we now have that as part of our display, neat diorama. Something that's coming up in this fall, after Walk Back in Time, we've been approached by the Missouri Humanities Council to host a symposium here on, we are also a part, as you well know, of the Ulysses S. Grant Trail that runs through here, and they are wanting to have this Grant Trail Symposium, have a keynote speaker, and different scholars come. And this is something that's usually been held in St. Louis or larger areas, Cape Girardeau, but they really like how we have presented the Grant's Trail. They like our, they like how much Grant has been embedded in this community, whether he stayed here or had his troops here. And so they're wanting to do that on the last weekend, I believe, of October of this year, and they'll have it on the grounds. We'll do it in the church since we have seating for enough people. And he said that that brings usually between 40 and 70 people or so into town from all over the place, so we're anxious to see how that goes. And we will go ahead and follow up the following day with probably some tours. He's hoping to get maybe some smaller reenactment groups to do something that day entertaining for the people that do spend the time. And we just really want to thank you for considering us. We thank you for all you do for us, for the other people in the city, and we appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure to the board.
I move that, I move for the passage of Bill number 2018-29, is that where we are?
The reading.
Reading. By title only and passage of Bill 2018-29. A resolution authorizing the city manager.
You just make the motion to have the reading by title only.
Okay, reading by title only.
Then equal second, and then you'll read.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm new.
Been there, been there, done that. It's not easy.
It's kind of, I've been listening to you, but it's confusing, I'll tell you.
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Thank, yes.
Okay.
Now you read.
Now read the title. Okay. Title is, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with the Audrain County Historical Society to Assist in Providing Services to Citizens."
Good question.
A move for passage.
I move for passage, or move for passage. Okay. Thank you.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Next item is B, title, "Bill number 2018-30, A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Presser Performing Arts Center to Assist in Providing Services to Citizens." Reading by title only and passage, Mr. Briggs. Yes. I missed him.
Again?
Again. This is also our annual agreement with the presser. This is our annual agreement with presser as well, and to present this one is Chad Schumacher.
The attached resolution authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Presser Performing Arts Center to assist in providing citizens, services to our citizens. The 2017-18 budget allows for the city of Mexico to contribute to the Presser Performing Arts Center the sum of $10,000 for the use in and providing programs and activities to citizens. The city has provided this level of assistance to PPA since 2002. The staff recommends that the city of Mexico and Presser Performing Arts Center enter into an agreement and that the council proceed with reading by title only and passage of the attached resolution. And I believe the executive director of Presser Performing Arts Center, Lois Brace, is with us tonight if she'd like to say anything. And Stephanie Kulis also.
Administrator Stephanie Kulis. Let's start the first time. Hi, I'm Stephanie Kulis, and I'm the administrator at Presser Performing Arts Center, and we want to thank you for the support that you've given us over the past year, and multiple years since 2002. We are a multidisciplinary arts center, and we cover a 30-mile radius and 22 ZIP codes, and we have 20,000 people that come through our doors each year. As you know, we just finished our new building, and in that building, we have had Peter Pan, Godspell, and First Baptist of Ivy Gap this last year, this last weekend. And we're off to a great start this year, and we hope to bring in more people. We have 70, we had 75 kids audition for our summer camps this summer, and we'll have probably 120 campers this summer coming through our doors. So, do you have anything else that I can ask? Thank you.
That place is rhythm chains in seventh and eighth grade.
Yes. I had somebody come through today asking for a tour that did their band practice, and they're like, "It feels so much bigger than I thought," because they were so, so much smaller than they thought, because they were so little whenever they were there.
It looks nice.
Thank you.
Your most pleasure.
Okay. I move for a reading of Bill number 2018-30.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill number 2018-30, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with the Presser Performing Arts Center to Assist in Providing Services to Citizens." I move for a passage of Bill number 2018-30.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
I was sharing. Just wanted to share the seconds with you.
Catch up with the seconds, too.
Next item is C, Bill number 2018-31, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Extension to the City's On-Call Engineering Service Agreement with Klingner &amp; Associates PC." Reading by title only and passage. Mr. Schlegel.
This is a renewal of our contract with them for an additional year, and to cover the terms, we'll turn to Chad Schumacher.
Thank you, Bruce. Council approved the contract for on-call engineering services with Klingner &amp; Associates PC of Hannibal, Missouri at the January 25, 2016, meeting. The original contract provided for three one-year renewal options, and this would be the second renewal option. Engineering and park staff conducted an annual performance review meeting with Klingner &amp; Associates on March 20, and staff is satisfied with the work Klingner &amp; Associates PC has completed the past year. We have more than one on-call engineering firm because we have some different disciplines that are required across the breadth of all the things that we do in the city, so that one of Klingner's specialties is dam inspections and work on aquatic berms, so if you're wondering why we have multiples, that's why. Staff recommends that council proceed with reading by title only and passage of the resolution authorizing an extension to the on-call engineering services agreement with Klingner &amp; Associates PC.
Your most pleasure.
I make the motion to read Bill number 2018-31.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill number 2018-31, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Extension to the City's On-Call Engineering Service Agreement with Klingner &amp; Associates PC." I move for a passage of Bill number 2018-31.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Next is item D, Bill number 2018-32, "A Resolution Accepting the Conveyance of Right-Aways and Temporary Construction Easements for the Holt Street Reconstruction Project Mo. TIDP 4400-310 Project." Reading by title only and passage, Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, as council is aware, the city of Mexico applied through the Missouri Department of Transportation to the Federal Highway Administration to receive funds to reconstruct Holt Street. As a part of that design of the sidewalks, we do require the need for some additional right-of-way and construction easements. We have, council has approved right-of-way and temporary easements from 13 of the property owners during February and March of this year. This resolution would again authorize the council to accept right-of-way and temporary easements from four of the additional property owners. And this would complete, I believe, everyone on the north side of the street at this time. So staff recommends council proceed with reading by title only and passage of the attached resolution, accepting the conveyance of right-of-way and temporary construction easements for the Holt Street reconstruction project.
So, I don't know what I'm doing. No, I move, I move for reading by title only and passage of Bill number 2018-32.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Now I move for passage.
And you have to read it.
Read the title.
Okay, 2018, oh, I've lost my place here. Okay. "A Resolution Accepting the Conveyance of Right-Aways and Temporary Construction Easements for the Holt Street Reconstruction Project." Mo. TIDP 4400, in parentheses, 310 project. Reading by title and passage.
Move for passage.
Move for passage. Got you.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Item E, Bill number 2018-33, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Sign a Task Order with Klingner &amp; Associates PC for ADA-compliant sidewalk design in the downtown area." Reading by title only and passage. Mr. Schlegel.
Yes. The concrete paver sidewalks around in the downtown, as we know, does not meet the criteria because of roughness, cross-slope with the American with Disabilities Act. The Department of Justice has interpreted the act to require sidewalks that adjacent to a road that is being improved must be brought up to ADA standards. Court rulings have also interpreted the same. In 2018, the project that we have led is for asphalt improvements. The block of Monroe from Washington to Clark will have an overlay. The sidewalks on both sides of the block are, therefore, non-compliant pavers in the block bound by the stretch of Monroe, Washington, Love &amp; Clark, and also the Hitchlot. The Hitchlot is currently owned by the city and is also non-compliant. This task order will authorize, under the city's on-call contract with Klingner &amp; Associates, the design of the sidewalks to meet ADA standards. The design cost is $17,800, and it is covered under the current annual street maintenance budget. We'll need to evaluate funding mechanisms for the construction out of future budgets, but in the meantime, what we'll have is the first step in place, which is the design to meet the compliance as required by the law. So we are asking that the council proceed with reading by title only and passage of the attached resolution authorizing us to sign a task order with Klingner &amp; Associates to get the design done for the sidewalks.
I move for a reading of Bill number 2018-33.
Go ahead, second.
Oh, second, okay.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill number 2018-33, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Sign a Task Order with Klingner &amp; Associates PC for ADA-compliant sidewalk design in the downtown area." I move for passage of Bill number 2018-33.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Next item is F, Bill number 2018-34, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Agreement with Various Organizations for Requested Funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax." Reading by title only and passage, Mr. Schlegel.
Yes, Senator, we have received two requests for funding from the tourism tax, and to cover the requests and recommendations, turn to Roger Haynes.
The Tourism Commission met on Tuesday, April 17, and as part of their agenda, they reviewed two applications for tourism funding and recommend to council the distribution of funds as follows. The first event to be held through the Mexico JC would be the 2018 Soybean Festival. That will be held on August 24th and 25th. They requested $5,000 for advertising, and the commission recommends $5,000. That level of funding has been provided since 2011. The second organization, the Miss Missouri organization, will have their 2018 Miss Missouri pageant on the dates of June 13 through the 16. The request for funding was in the amount of $10,000. The amount recommended by the commission is $8,000. I was asked by the commission to give a little background for that decision, and although the organization, the Miss Missouri organization, has been approved for $10,000 the past three years, 2015, '16, and '17, the funds that were requested for reimbursement during those years were in the amounts of $7,099, $7,545, and $6,649, averaging a reimbursement of about $2,900 less than what was requested and approved. Therefore, the commission felt like that was holding back some monies that might be able to be used by other organizations that is requesting advertising funding for tourism-related events. Staff recommends that council concur with the Mexico Tourism Commission's recommendation and proceed with reading by title only and passage of the attached resolution. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. And Ann Jolly, the board, the chairman of the board, is here this evening, and she'd like an opportunity to speak also. Thank you.
Like Roger said, I'm Ann Jolly. I'm chairman of the board for Miss Missouri, and first, I would like to say thank you. I never feel like thanks is enough for what you do, not just monetarily, but a lot of resources for our orientation and our Miss Missouri Week. Just know that you would, our job would be a lot harder without you involved. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. This year, we're going to have 57 contestants compete, which brings family, friends, their, you know, their pageant family. That's up from last year, so hopefully that brings more people into Mexico. We also will have over 60 little show-me princesses that will come in from all over the state that will participate in our mentoring program, so they, again, will bring family and friends with them. So just a few things that are going on in the Miss Missouri world. The first of April, we held our orientation in town. That always brings people into town using the hotels and restaurants. That also was, not only was it our orientation, but it's also Miss America serves. So every state, all the contestants participate nationwide and do services within the communities. So we brought all the girls to Mexico, and they volunteered at the animal shelter, they went to the veterans home, they went to Teal Lake Assistant Living, they volunteered at the Jolly Bean Conspiracy. at the Jolly Bean Conspiracy at the high school. So it was just kind of our way of giving back to the town of Mexico for everything that they do for us. And also, with Miss America serves, the contestants are to raise money for Children's Miracle Network. So Children's Miracle Network is the platform for Miss America. I am really proud to say that for the second year in a row, that Missouri was the number one state last year raising over $21,000, and this year raising over $17,000 during the Miss America serves campaign. Also, our girls raised CMN money coming into the state pageant. Last year, our girls raised over $48,000 coming into state, and you combine that with the $21,000 they raised for Miss America serves, which gave us almost $70,000 that our girls raised. And the reason I mention this is because anytime I can debunk the idea that we are just a beauty pageant, I like to do that, because these girls are not only, not only raise money for CMN, but they also have their own personal platform, and every year, our girls register over 1,000 hours of volunteer within their community and supporting their Would like to mention, this year, we will give over $57,000 in scholarships, which, again, in our organization, we teach empowerment, we teach service to humanity, and support education. And then to kind of wrap this up, I couldn't do this presentation without mentioning our Miss Missouri Jennifer Davis, who was first runner-up at Miss America. We were so close. Someday, we're going to get a Miss America again for Missouri and Mexico. It would just be beyond our wildest dreams, right? I want to mention, we are hosting business after hours on May 15 at The Chamber. We would love to have you there. We will be honoring Jen and kicking off Pageant Week. And in closing, I'd like to say, if you've never been to the Miss Missouri Pageant, come. It's June 13 through 16 this year, and we would, we would love to have you there. And I also want to mention that Miss Missouri is always available for appearances. We would love to involve her a lot more into the community, so if you ever have a function or event, or please reach out to us, because we would like to get her here. Any questions? This makes me so nervous, sorry. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Plager.
I make the motion, I read bill number 2018-34, by title only in passage.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill number 2018-34, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with the Various Organizations for Requested Funding from the Mexico Tourism Tax," move for passage of bill number 2018-34.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Item G, bill number 2018-35, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with the Miss Missouri Scholarship Pageant Incorporated to Provide Tourism Activities for the City of Mexico, Missouri," reading by title only in passage. Mr. Slick.
Yes, Senator, this is our city's annual agreement with Miss Missouri for general funds, as budgeted, to cover the details, so we'll turn to Roger Haynes.
Of course, I believe earlier Ann gave an excellent overview of what Miss Missouri does bring to the community, and the 2017-18 annual budget allows $10,000 from the general fund for use by the Miss Missouri Pageant Incorporated. The city has been providing general fund support to the Miss Missouri Scholarship Pageant Incorporated for several years, with contributions being at the level of $10,000 since 2001. Staff recommends that the City of Mexico and the Miss Missouri Scholarship Pageant Incorporated enter into an agreement promoting tourism, and council proceed with reading by title only in passage of the attached resolutions. And I don't know if Ann wants to speak again or not.
Please.
You have nothing to add?
Charles Plager.
I, I'm, okay, I move for reading of bill 2018-35 by title only.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
You read it.
Okay. "A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with the Miss Missouri Scholarship Pageant Incorporated to Provide Tourism Acts for the City of Mexico, Missouri." I move for passage.
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Other business, payment of the claims.
I'm moving, I'm moving to pay the bills.
Miller?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Next item are comments. We'll begin with the council, and we're going to go left to right tonight. We'll start with Dr. Shivers.
Well, his presser did another amazing job. I'm not saying that because I was in it with First Baptist of Ivy Gap. I think everything's been going pretty good. I think everything made.
Mr. Nichols.
Got to attend the school board meeting, the last session ahead. It's kind of a strange to have my son on the scoreboard now. He makes less money than we do. Really enjoy the weather, Bruce. Keep your job up. Good job. That's all.
Mrs. Briggs?
Well, I was going to talk about the show at Presser Hall yesterday, the Baptist, whatever, the Ivy. You were in it, and Jan was in it. I saw Chris there, and I was there. There were three council members, but it's a great facility to go and visit and attend at any time.
Well, kind of the same thing for me. I enjoyed it, and I especially liked seeing Dr. Shivers with gray hair. She looked really nice, you know?
I wanted to join you.
No, thank you. That's dignified when you're old. It's not great.
It's wisdom, it's wisdom.
Wisdom, that's what it is, wisdom. Other than that, I, everything, we're just living the dream here in Mexico, Missouri. There's nothing much else to say.
Just got to get a new pool.
Yeah.
Next item will be public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, we ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address. We'd like to hold your comments to three minutes. The floor is open. Ann, would you like to speak again?
I know you enjoyed it the first time.